Is Brenda? Oh, she is, okay. First up, we have Economic Development with the EDC Director, Brenda.
Good morning, Brenda Batch Alder here from the Roscommon County EDC. We do have a board member that's seeking reappointment to the EDC. His name's Vijay Kumar. He's been part of the EDC for at least one term, and he owns Adapt Physical Therapy over in St. Helen. He's also the Vice Chair for the St. Helen Chamber of Commerce, and he serves on our Business Development Committee. So I'm hoping that the Board of Commissioners will make a formal approval for Vijay's reappointment for another term.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Yes.
Thanks, Andrew.
Anyone else? Next up is the Brownfield Redevelopment Reappointment Application.
Yeah, so we have two committee members also up for reappointment for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have Wendy Engel. Wendy's been part of our committee since it was formed, so she's very active. She's also from Marky Township and serves on the Township Board over there. Then in addition to Wendy, we also have Catherine Meffner. Catherine is also on the EDC, same as Wendy, but Catherine is also on our Executive Committee for the Brownfield Redevelopment.
Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Once again, Manager, two still candidates.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mark, you're both good candidates.
We need motions for these on our next meeting. Prove them. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is Sheriff Stern with the STING update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to have a couple minutes of your time. This is Sergeant Ray Rollatt from STING Narcotics. I say, Joe, Michigan State Trooper, and he's assigned to oversee STING Narcotics at this point. For those of you that don't know, STING Narcotics is a multi-jurisdictional task force that are primarily designed to investigate drug activity, delivering narcotics coming in and out of our area. But they're multifaceted. They do more than just drug investigations. It helped us on numerous different criminal cases that we've been working on over the course of thirty, roughly thirty-five years. So Sergeant Rollatt come in today just to give you guys an update as far as STING operations and what they're doing in Roscommon County.
Morning.
Morning.
I've been here for about two years now. I spent the majority of my career down in Detroit, and it's been wonderful to be part of this community, so thank you for having me. Did want to talk about a couple things going on in the area. We recently got the Height of Threat Assessment for Michigan. Not surprising, the biggest two threats to this area of operation is methamphetamine and fentanyl in that order, and that is what we target primarily, is people that are trying to sell methamphetamine and fentanyl in the area. I'm going to go over some stats in a minute because they can be kind of boring, but I would like to touch on just a couple quick things and some misconceptions. We are not targeting drug users in your community. Everybody's families have been affected in somewhere or form with friends or family through fentanyl, including myself, who's lost two cousins to fentanyl. So I take it very seriously and see what it does to people's families. I was surprised when I first got here, specifically Oatman Lake and Prudenville, how bad of a problem that there is with fentanyl and methamphetamine. And even though we cover a six-county area, we have great relationships. Approximately one-third of our resources are directed at Roscommon County and trying to tamp that down, and I think we've done a really good job so far. One of the most important things about STING is having local officers on the team because we need that connection to that local agency and those local officers for information sharing. And we appreciate having the deputy that we do on the team. When you have a deputy on the team, what you get is a six-person team that that sheriff at any time can call. If we need assistance with surveillance, we come. If you have property crimes, we come and assist. We assist with search warrants. We assist with resources. You're not just getting one person on the team, you're getting a whole package. And I don't want to say if, which is 100% not true, if a county doesn't have somebody on the team, we will certainly still help them. But a county that does have somebody on the team, that's our priority. If the sheriff calls and says, hey, I have a problem, can you guys look into it? Try to make some enforcement. I can pretty much guarantee we're there the next day, and that comes up on our priority list. Because that, to me, if somebody's investing in STING, that means their community doesn't want drugs out there. And the drugs we're facing right now are the worst drugs I've seen since I've been in police, in police work. I don't need to lecture you guys about methamphetamine, but once people get on that drug, it's unlikely they're ever to come off that drug unless they go to jail. There is rehab that's out there, but it psychologically changes you. I'm not a doctor, but it's well-studied. They're going to continue to try to go back to it, and it's, as I'm sure the sheriff could let you know, most crimes in Roscommon County are linked back to drug use, whether it's violence in the home, whether it's theft, or whether it's property crime. And that's a well-documented thing. Any questions about that so far? Sorry, I kind of ramble about things that I'm passionate about, which is drug enforcement. I did want to touch briefly on our stats from last year. Again, we are a six-person team, we cover six counties. Did make sixty-four felony arrests with one hundred and thirty-nine felony counts. We seized over fifty firearms, including fourteen pistols and thirty-six rifles and shotguns. I'm a big supporter of the Second Amendment. I'm not a supporter of people selling felony drugs while being in possession of firearms. And we take that very seriously. We don't want people on methamphetamine that have firearms. That's why we are seizing firearms. We did a total of thirty-four search warrants. When I say that, that's actually court-ordered. We're going to come to your house, and we're going to enter and seize evidence. So just worth noting there. Some of this other stuff's a little boring unless you want to know about cell phone search warrants and downloads I could fill you in. Moving on, this is what kind of gets surprising in the area, the amount of drugs that we're seizing in the six-county area. I would say, in comparison to other rural teams across the state, and again, I came from an urban task force, and I'm on a rural team. STING is producing the most drug seizures because the people on the team are dedicated to the mission, which is, we want to clean community, raise our families, and just like everybody else does. I'm not going to go through all of the pills and things like that, but I'm going to touch on the two main drugs I talked to you guys about. Fentanyl. We seized almost six hundred grams, so closing in on a kilogram of fentanyl. And just for, just for a quick visual, if you have a sugar packet, that's exactly one metric gram. If you've divided that up into twenty pieces of sugar, that's twenty doses of fentanyl. So we've taken six hundred times that, so six hundred grams of fentanyl that has come into the area. And then we move on to methamphetamine. It's over five pounds of methamphetamine. And I don't think you guys need a visual for how much methamphetamine that is. There is a ton of pressure specifically from downstate sources that you can identify, and we, I don't want to throw those cities under the bus here. There is a push to create a market up here, and we are constantly fighting that because, just like any business, supply and demand is up here. Right now, the demand, people want the drugs. It is our job to stop it from getting up here, but that pressure is there. And I was recently at a meeting with the Seventh District, which is state police, kind of northern from here. A county pulled out of the local task force and kind of went laissez-faire with drug enforcement. Within six months, they had three drive-by shootings in a northern Michigan county because people were pushing in for that drug territory in that market. Because you can double or triple your price what you would charge in the city. I think that's worth noting. Do you guys want to hear about any other of the drugs seized? Those are the main two that we focus on. There's other things that just kind of come with the business.
Since marijuana is now legalized, is that still a major problem or not? Are you doing any seizing of marijuana?
No. There was, we assisted the, there is a marijuana task force through the state of Michigan, which deals with illegal grows, and they target that. We helped them with one, and that was over in Mayo, but we don't focus on marijuana. Our, our main focus is fentanyl, meth, and specifically if somebody has firearms and selling those, those drugs.
So people growing their own, that's not any big deal?
Well, it depends because the amounts and how much they're growing. That's not something that we're going to enforce.
I was wondering if you've done any, anything on that, that's.
No, but there is a task force that we work with, and if there is a grow that you guys have concerns about through the sheriff, I'm a great conduit to get that looked at.
I don't know any.
I mean, I don't have any.
I've heard of them, you know.
Yeah, it's out there. It is out there, but that's, that's not a mission for us.
You were talking earlier about, and I was going to interject about the cellphone, being able to intercept or do seizures on cellphone information?
Yes.
But what is going on with that? I'm just curi, I'm just curious.
Oh, yeah. So if we have, if we're building a legal case against somebody who we are going to try to prove that's selling drugs, one of the best things that we can get is to download their text messages that shows them selling drugs. So if we do, for example, a search warrant due to residence, and we arrest somebody for selling methamphetamine, we will then go to a judge and try to get a second search warrant to authorize us to get that phone downloaded, to give us further evidence to try to convict that person.
So even if they destroyed their phone, those messages still exist and they're out there, correct?
Often, yes.
Okay. You have to get those from the phone company, is that very difficult to do?
The text messages from the phone company, yes, from the specific co, the specific phone, not normally. But as phones advance, they also give us issues with downloading something to a security features and stuff like that.
There's been more than a few overdose deaths that we've been able to charge person that supplied the drugs based off of cellphone records.
What are those charges usually?
Overdose caused death.
Invol, oh, okay. Is that like an involuntary manslaughter or something like that, or?
It's a felony? Yeah, answer specifically.
Okay.
Many years.
Okay. Thanks.
And the last thing I have to add is, I have been so impressed with the police departments up here and the prosecutors and the community in general, and people not wanting these hard drugs in their community. Because there should not be a community anybody wants to live in where it's acceptable for people to be smoking meth and shooting fentanyl in the streets. And we're fighting hard to make sure that that is not an acceptable practice anywhere.
What we, what can we as a commission do now that we're not doing or helping you with?
I, I mean, the biggest thing is, is continue the funding for the program. Like I've said before, we are the only county in that six-county region that has participated in STING since the inception of the team. To continue on with that program is, I mean, the biggest thing that, that we ask for in law enforcement because it's so vital to our community. As I said, they don't only just deal with drugs. When we need assistance, they're there. The other day, for example, we, and most of you probably know through the press release, we had a possible threat to our schools in the community. Our drug enforcement officer was coming through Roscommon County, working on something, immediately jumped off of what he was doing, went right to the school, started setting surveillance and meeting with the, with the staff members at the school, informed them what was going on, and keep security on the building. It's things like that that, that they're constantly involved in helping us for warrants on BNEs and tracking down suspects and things like that. They're just, the resources that they give us on the roadside, invaluable.
What was the outcome of that?
What's that?
What was the outcome of?
We were able to track the person down in another state, and there was no threat to our, our community.
So you're going to be charged?
That's all going to go to the prosecutor's office. I don't know where that, where that's going to end up going. There's some extenuating circumstance.
Thank you.
Now, the one, the one thing to be cognizant of is, we have two major pressways that come through our county. Just because there's a county line doesn't mean that things don't pass back and forth. Our county is linked with Oklahoma County, is linked with Osco County, Crawford County. Those are all, Osco County, they're all intertwined, and the people are intertwined, and they move back and forth. So to think that Oatman Lake or Roscommon doesn't have a problem, they're all interlinked. If one area, one of those areas has a problem, we all have a problem. And we all have a problem.
Is, is, is your STING operations that able to very fluently move between the counties pretty easily?
Every day. If you saw the odometer on my work truck, you'd, you'd feel mad for the truck. It's, it's a lot of driving, but we do it wherever we're needed. And to touch on what the sheriff was saying here, there was an armed robbery in Osco County. I'm sure some of you guys saw that in the news. Saturday morning, I was up at six going to execute the search warrant as part of that. Whatever we're needed for, we, we're not just a talking point. We get the call to help, we come to help. And it's not just drugs. Our focus is drugs, but we're multifaceted in what we can do. We go through all those areas every day. I don't mind the drive-from railing all the way home to Osco County sometimes. We're back and forth. It beats the freeway traffic, too.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you for what you've done over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is MERS Defined Contribution Default Rate, Noel Martin.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Okay, so just to give you a quick, the defined contribution plan with MERS is the active plan that all of our new hire, new hires go into that are non-union. And when, when you're hired, you can choose. We offer a contribution rate of three, four, or five percent that the county will match whatever the individual chooses for their retirement plan. So MERS has reached out to me, to our, specifically our regional manager, to let us know that MERS has been communicating with IRS over the last while about a cash or deferred arrangement, basically CODA, their IRS regulations under this specific plan, and how they affect our DC divisions that we have. So because we have choices between three, four, or five percent, there are certain regulations that IRS needs us to, MERS needs us to choose, so then that way we're in compliance with IRS regulations when it comes to our plan. So essentially, they have emphasized, IRS has emphasized that we cannot allow participants to change what they elect when they enter into the, the workforce. If they move from a department to a department, they used, MERS used to say, yes, we can allow them to change what that rate is. IRS has emphasized, no, it cannot change. It must be one rate, and it must stay that rate, or it must be set at a default rate. So we essentially need to decide what that default rate needs to be. The default that MERS will choose is three percent. And I and Jody, we have, are in agreement. We have always, and ever since I started ten years ago, we've always encouraged a five percent contribution for our employees. It gives them the maximum benefit from, you know, from the county that gives them the ultimate option to be able to get their money into the investment portfolio that they choose and get their money to grow over time. So then that way they have a nice, you know, cash retirement for themselves when they do retire. That being said, if they were at a five percent and say someone transferred, if we had a default rate of three percent, then that person would essentially go down to a three percent. And I, I would encourage us to do a five percent default rate. Typically, anybody who has come to me to change in the last ten years has always wanted to go to a higher rate rather than a lower rate. And so if we do a five percent, I don't see any kind of conflict that, you know, an employee would be super upset about, you know. Also, when we do plan for new employees, we always choose five percent for our budgeting purposes. So it's nothing that would be an additional cost than what we don't already plan for or incur in the budget. Essentially, MERS just needs you guys to make an official decision. So then that way, we, they know and they have it on file. If you have any questions about any of it, go ahead.
A question, you do a good job, by the way.
Thank you.
The five percent, is that the matching, what the county's going to match up to five percent? What's the maximum amount an employee can put in? Can they put up like the ten percent, fifteen percent, or not?
So they are allowed to max a five percent pre-tax. They are allowed to do an after-tax amount. We also do offer after-tax.
So they don't get a deduction for it?
Correct. Now, there is, we do offer an alternative plan. We sponsor the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan, which is also through MERS, and we also have two other companies that offer it as well that we sponsor. But essentially, it offers us and our employees an alternative pre-tax plan. So you could supplement your five percent that you're doing in your defined contribution. You could choose ten percent. You could do, you know, basically up to the IRS maximum. You could have come out pre-tax. So you would have your MERS Defined Contribution Retirement Plan, where you're putting in your five percent. Say you want to do a ten percent after-tax. We're matching the five percent, and that is one part of your retirement plan. And then you can enroll in a 457 plan, and I could choose, I want to do one, I want to match it, I want to do a ten percent. So I would do a ten percent of my own pre-tax money.
Five percent over and above the five?
Exactly.
Okay, so you go up to five additional?
Yeah, the county will match five percent.
Match five, after that, you can still get tax-deferred, another five percent?
Yep, you can do.
That's, that was the question I had.
You can tax-defer, like I said, up to the IRS, the IRS maximum, which.
What is the IRS maximum?
I don't remember, it's around thirty thousand, I think, but don't quote me on that because I haven't looked. I'll be honest, there's not many employees here that would be able to be able to do, to be, they would make enough to be able to match that actual deferment over the course of the year. But if that, like I said, it was around thirty thousand, the last time I checked, it might even be like forty-five.
It doesn't matter what the percentage is, it matters on the, on the cap, on the amount.
Exactly, exactly. And that's over the course of a year.
So give me thirty thousand a year, you could put all your salary in.
You could, if you wanted to, absolutely, yeah.
I'll go with your recommendation.
Have a question?
Absolutely. It does not because that is actually in, within our planned contract, the defined contr, or defined contribution contract that we have with MERS, is that if you're an eligible employee, you must participate. You can do the three percent if you want, but it is a, it is a mandatory, mandatory participation for any eligible employees. Mm-hmm. Correct. The minimum they can select is three.
We set the deferred at five, you have to select five?
No, they are still allowed to select three when they, when they hire in. If we do hire someone and they choose to not file out, fill out a paperwork of some kind, and we still have to comply with the guidelines of our contract, the default rate would be five, but they still have the option to choose three. That would just be in the event that somebody was unable to fill out their paperwork or didn't get their paperwork, but I don't.
And what year are they vested?
Five years.
But they can recoup their share?
Absolutely. Yep. I like to describe, whenever I onboard anyone, I describe them, to them that their money goes into one bucket, and then the county's money goes into a bucket, and it has both of their names on it, but it doesn't be cut, and it goes up and down with the market. They're, you know, just the way that any account would. But if they leave before that five years and they're not vested, they get to take their bucket with them, and the county bucket stays and actually pays for future contribution, future, our county, future contributions. But at five years, that bucket melts, and it becomes all of their money. So it's just, to me, it's a nice visual to understand how your money works.
Are, are you saying that the county portion, does the employee get that eventually? They just can't get it right away?
Only if they're vested at five years. If they, if they leave before five.
So it's kind of like a little bit of a golden handcuffs thing where they have to stay here to get it.
Yeah.
Is this any different, is this what you recommend, any different than what we've always done? That's fine with me.
Yep, we just, as from MERS, they have their guidelines they need, and because we're governed, obviously, you know, by you guys, you guys are the governing body of the, of the contract, so they need your say, basically, of what our default rate will be, if it's going to be different than the three percent.
I have a motion already prepared with a little Blake spot for you guys, so I can give it to Julie for you guys for two weeks. Other questions? If there's no other questions, we will adjourn until kind of clock? The Roscommon County Board of Commissioners for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Milburn, would you like?
The Constitution, the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands foundation under God in the physical delivery of justice for all.
Call please.
Here.
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 Here. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda before we approve it? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Manager.
Mark. Second. Discussion. All roll, please.
Yes.
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 Everything in the consent agenda was distributed in advance of this meeting. Are there any items within the consent agenda that need to be removed for further discussion? Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Public comment, is there any public comment? Do we have any visitors? We have no unfinished or new business on the agenda, so we are at motions and resolutions.
Move to authorize nine-one-one Director Vance J. Stringham to expend up to thirty-three thousand dollars to replace the existing Central Dispatch uninterrupted power system, which was originally installed in two thousand seven, end of life.
So move on that motion, and this is very important. We experienced an outage a month ago, and we don't replace this piece of equipment. We would have had to move to a different agency to dispatch.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Question? Call call?
Wolfson? Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Pastor Green?
Yes.
Period. Move to authorize Equalization Director Jamie Hauserman to enter into contract with Caligo GIS for the purpose of performing all GIS parcel splits and combinations, maintaining parcel boundary revisions and corrections, and maintaining a pub. publicly accessible GIS mapping, including maintenance, for an annual cost of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, is this in our budget?
Yes, it is. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astrogren?
Yes.
Wolfson? Period.
Committee reports. Commissioner Ostergren?
We're doing committees now, okay. Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll report on the three lakes, our, our lake levels, on all three lakes. Uh, the current level on Higgins Lake is point seven-two inches above the maximum winter drawdown, or five-point-two-eight inches low summer level. Uh, last year at this time, it was four-point-three-two inches uh below the summer level, or one-point-six inches, eight inches above the winter drawdown, and that's the difference. This year, it is point-nine-six inches lower than it was last year on this date, or yesterday's date, I should say. Holden Lake, uh, and, and we are in compliance, by the way, with the court order. Uh, Holden Lake, it is uh three-point-six inches above the uh maximum winter drawdown, uh, or two-point-four inches below the summer level. Last year at this time, it was two-point-two-eight inches uh uh below the summer level, or three-point-seven-two inches above the maximum winter drawdown. A difference of point-one-two, pretty insignificant difference between last year and this year, and it is in compliance with the court order. Uh, Lake St. Helen is uh four-point-six-eight inches above the maximum winter drawdown, or one-point-three-two inches below the summer level. Uh, last year at this time, it was four-point-three-two inches, quite a bit lower the, uh, last year than it was this year, uh, or one-point-six-eight inches above the maximum winter drawdown. Uh, three inches difference between last year at, on this date, and this year, and it is in compliance with the court order. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn?
Economic development. We talked about the folks that be re, that would be reappointed, and district health. Commissioner Sensory will be recording that. Bottom line, don't get sick.
Commissioner Russo?
Point that I have is I attended the meeting at Markey Township.
I attended the agenda meeting on Thursday, February eighth, district health meeting, along with Commissioner Milburn on that. Um, in that meeting, we did the election of the chair, vice chair, along with appointments of the committee assignments, and set the twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule. We went over the revenue and expenditure report ending in December of twenty-twenty-three. The physician report talked about prion disease that affect the brain and cause normal proteins to become abnormal, which in turn causes the prion to develop. There's no known treatment or cure, which makes the disease fatal. An example would be chronic wasting disease or mad cow disease. Um, I also had Michigan Works on January twenty-sixth. We went over the audit for twenty-twenty-three, and it passed with no deficiencies. We did the election of the chair and vice chair, went over grant status, financial reports for December, and the expenditure summary for December. Um, the director port, report now has a new format, which will make it a lot easier to track each of the counties, which are Aranac, Clare, Gladwin, Iosco, Ogama, and Roscommon. Michigan Career Quest Date was set for October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at the Ryder Center at Saginaw Valley State University. Um, for anyone that doesn't know what that is, it's where students come in different, from different schools and different businesses have exhibit booths. Students can get their hands on and see what that type of career would be like. The past year, they received a hundred and ninety thousand in donations and sponsorships, and approximately forty-six hundred students attended from fifty-one schools. Um, two conferences were offered to the board members. Um, in addition to that, there's an annual conference in Traverse City in September, and a national association conference in San Antonio, Texas in May. Um, I spoke at the Roscommon Township Meeting um on the invitation of Commissioner Milber um regarding the millage. I attended the Denton Township Meeting, and I attended the Holden Lake Lake Level Control Structure public hearing at Markey Township on February seventh. There was a large attendance of people. This was for the Holden Lake SAD District. There were lots of questions and feedback. Main focus of the meeting was on the steps, and where we are currently, and what steps are next when it comes to apportionments. Um, multiple discussions with the delegated authority involving updates. And we have a materials management meeting for the thirteenth and fourteenth, which is recorded, and I will be watching those and reporting that at the next meeting. Commissioner Wolfson?
On January twenty-fifth, I covered the emergency mean, management meeting for Eric. The biggest outcome of that was, there's been changes at the way, great in hospital, what they do and don't do, which is equating to longer ambulance runs for some of our ambulances, because they have to transport people to other hospitals instead for some things. Um, then I also attended uh Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Emergency Meeting for Eric. That was not a good one. They had a audit report by a company. What came out of that was, basically, the HR department needs many changes to bring fairness to employees, how employees are hired, treated, and the way raises are given. And then, on the financial end of the audit, a fifth, um, forensic investigation was ordered because collusion between financial employees was suspected. Um, it was not all good news. Other than that, that's it.
And I want to thank Commissioner Wilson for attending that meeting. I was out of town. Uh, and it's, it was quite shocking when I got back to find out what everything was all about, that having to actually do a forensic audit. And we discuss this uh on the side, but I think it's uh it, it's a shame. It's something that we shall be concerned about, and what's going to be going on in that forensic audit, because they found irregularities. I've talked to Ben Thompson about it, and there's some irregularities that are going on inside the organization. And when I talked with Chairman Censor about this too, it's, the uh uh enabling agreement was actually created during a time when those people knew what was going on, and and uh that, that presents a problem for me, and I believe the rest of the board is also, we should also be concerned about that. Thank you. Thanks, Rex.
Can I make a further comment on that?
Yes.
Um, it was also mentioned that the interim Brian has made some good changes since he's been there, and I really don't understand why he isn't full-time director of that.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I thi- I think he should be, and it's too bad that he hasn't been made. Maybe, he may not want the job, uh, in all seriousness, and talking with him at different times. He was just brought in as, as an emergency type of situation, and did it out of the kindness of his heart, really. So he may not want the job full-time. Uh, I, I think they should offer it to him, though.
We are at board comment. Before we have board comment, I would like to remind the board that each board member will be allowed to make a statement on their behalf, limited to five minutes or less. This time will not be allowed to be used for discussion with the public or other board members, debating accusations or review of any employee performance, or questioning someone's character. Words like conspiracy, corrupt, cover-up, et cetera, will not be tolerated from any board member as a, are accusatory in nature and deemed as disorderly conduct. With that being said, we will start with Commissioner Ostergren for board comments.
Yeah, I, I want to respond to the letter uh from Ann Makes, that was recently sent to, Jody passed on to us, and a couple of comments that she made that said that I am fighting against Bill six-six-two right now in pursuit of my own special interest. I have no own, I have no special interests. The special interests on this lake are two, twofold. One, maintaining the legal level in accordance with the law, and the other one is to get the, the level lowered. And I just want to remind the board that we passed a resolution back in twenty nineteen. If anybody wants to change the lake level control structure, all they have to do is get two-thirds of the owners on the lake and give us ten grand, and we'll start the process. If they want to change the legal lake level, which is a different matter entirely, they have to get two-thirds of the uh owners on the lakes to sign a petition and start the process that way. So that's what I wanted to, to reiterate. That's what has to happen in, in the process. Otherwise, we're, we are required by law as commissioners, and by the recent Court of Appeals ruling, to maintain the legal levels on all of our lakes. And uh, we're, I know we're off to a really good start this year, with Chase Shemke, in support of uh Commissioner Wilson and, and Censor on getting that done. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Milburn?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Miss Stacy Hisong, and her group staff of knowledgeable, professional folks, and the DA, Mr. Chase Shemke, for his excellent inform, informative presentation of Holden Lake Level Control Structure last week at Markey Township. This is kind of a big one here. If the public safety millage passes this month, I will, with approval of the chair, Sergeant Censor, on the twenty-seventh of March board meeting, offer a motion to the members of this board to reduce the general fund budget by one mil. This recommendation to reduce the general fund budget by one mil will lead to around one-point-six million dollar reduction to the general fund starting in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo?
Don't have anything.
Commissioner Wolfson?
Yes, I'd like to comment on two editorials that were in the Holden Lake Resorder. First of all, this is my opinion, not the board's opinions. I think these letters were misinforming people about taxable values and revenues to the county. It looked to me like not only was the formula for coming up with that wrong, but the math used in that formula was wrong. And I'd like to read something I found in research on how the headly works. And it is, if the assessed value of a local tax unit's total taxable property increases by more than the inflation rate, a maximum property tax millage must be reduced so the local unit's total taxable property yields the same gross revenue adjusted for inflation. Basically, headly rolls back the millage rate as your taxable value goes up, so you only get what the dollar amount you were when it first passed, plus inflation rate. Um, what happens with this, it limits our growth to the tune of inflation. With the increase in population requiring more services and more state mandated programs, Roscommon County is trying to operate with no real increase in revenue. Um, I think it was MSU put out a publication that said municipalities with a headly rollback in place have only gained thirteen percent increase in the last fourteen years. That equates to less than one percent increase in revenue per year. Now, that's taken into account inflation and so forth, but that's the only real growth rate.
I'd like to add something to. All right, okay.
Um, as far as public comment, um, again, I would also like to um thank Stacy Hisong um for her job and our delegated authority at that meeting at Markey Township regarding the Holden Lake SAD. I know that a lot of questions um came up, and we will be doing our best to get all of those answered and out to the public um regarding Mr. Milburn's um comment with the general fund millage. If this does, um, if our millage does pass for public safety, then I would encourage him to bring that to the board.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Um, with that being said, do we have any public comment? With no fur-, with no further public comment, this meeting would be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven AM. Commissioner Russo, would you like to be asked?
United States of America, to the Republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Censor?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Astrogren?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Let me make a quick comment. Um, after, as you mentioned, Darlene, after the Higgins Lake portion is done, I have another important Zoom meeting I have to go to on my phone, so uh hopefully you'll allow me to do that.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Ben, chair.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Astrogren?
Here.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Good to see you here.
Yes.
Public comment. There any public comment? Review of contracts, delegated authority. Commissioner Wilson?
Um, the board has stated they want to delegate authority Chase F P for the St. Helen and Higgins Lake Dam. Um, we're still in the process of getting a contract signed for those two lakes. We have a couple of items to work out, yeah.
Are there any discussion on that? Any questions?
I thought that had already been done.
No, it hasn't been done.
We approved it.
The board approved it.
And now it's just a matter of getting signature and both parties agreeing to the contract.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Higgins Lake, delegated authority update. Chase, I believe, is with us via Zoom.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, update. Uh, geotechnical investigation was done, unable to find anything with the probing um because of all the riprap out there, so nothing came from that. Uh, as far as a per, I plan to file a permit for Higgins Lake. Um, at the same time, I do the Holden Lake repair permit, just easier just to do it at the same time. The permit will request a raise of height of the flop, flop gates by bolting a plate on there, a raise of height of the sheeting with a wood cap, and to put eight to twelve inches of rocks back into the spillway to protect the footing from undermining and hopefully help retain water over the dry months. That is Higgins Lake. Are there any questions?
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
Chase, you said that you did some probing, or uh have you been able to find anything going on with uh the, the functionality underneath the dam?
No, the only thing I found is that behind the dam, kind of in the middle of gate two, and flop gate two and flop gate three, was there was some random sheet pile uh pushed into the ground there. That was the only thing I found. I really couldn't get, I mean, there's, it's, there's so much rock out there. I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't believe how much rock is out there, so.
So what are your recommendations going to be going forward, besides the temporary fix?
The, the temporary fix is my recommendation. Essentially, it's do what you can without getting a uh, an, a P E involved, and see what, what happens, you know? I'm hoping with this, you'll retain all of your wave action, although while you're losing from wave action, and essentially, you'd be closing up the opening by uh, by a third.
What is a P T? What is the P T?
P E.
A P E, a professional. Sorry.
Yeah, they are pretty pricey.
Yep.
Any other questions? For Higgins?
Thank you. I'd like to excuse myself then.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I'll be back if, I don't know if that's just right.
Okay. Holton Lake delegated authority update.
Okay. All right, there's a lot here. Um, one, the new wheel gates are in behind the plate. Um, and just stop me if anyone has a question. I'll just go right down the list. Uh, Eagle Dam Safety got back to me on the plate removal. It's a go ahead. I'm just waiting for the permit to come in hand. Our application is good. Everything's good with that. I talked to Scott. And just waiting to have the physical piece of paper. Um, I'm hoping we will have that by the end of this week, beginning of next week. And then we can, you know, work on removing that plate and then having the new wheel gates do their job. I got, Tiffany got ahold of me. The final plans for the repair will be done this Friday. Um, I will probably. Go through those with Rex and Darlene and then once everything looks good and we're agreeing with everything, then we can. Uh, send out for a permit for those repairs and then send those plans out to bid so we can get that process moving. I wanted to give a sad update. The sad meeting went well. Um, just so you guys know, in the last month, we've had 90 people reach out with various questions. And I wanted to give a. Forgot out the tailor for helping corral and manage all those and field all those questions because that's a. It's been a lot of work and there's been a lot of questions. Um, at the sad meeting, we had a lot of good input. I know, yeah, all four of you were there. We had a, there was input about. Um, non homesteaded individuals wanting to say and feeling like they were represented. So it's going to be my recommendation to, in each township. To add a non homesteaded to the advisory board. To make the. Members consist of 13 members. Engineering RFP, which is Request for Proposal, is good to go. With a final review, so I'm hoping to have those out this week for. The redesign project on the Holton Lake Level Control Structure. Uh, this week I'm also going to reach out to the townships to see if I can't talk to them individually about road ends. Before the 28th meeting at the end of this month, so that you guys can be aware of all their thoughts. On the factors, because again. You guys have the final say on the factors. You guys can change. So I'd like to get. I'd like the townships to be represented in that say and talk them through what's going on and get their opinion. All right, continuing, um, there were some. I guess complaints and concerns about the. County website regarding lake levels. Um, I have updated my own website to. Allow for all viewing on lake levels. I've uploaded all the gate. And board information on there so people can see for each lake as long as. Well, some documents and some other information. I also found a company here in. In town to do free drone flyover. Those, there's a drone flyover of each. Lake level control structure on there too. That's pretty cool. That's worth a look at. Um, a discussion, I want to do a quick discussion about the gate and board reports. I don't know if you guys are even aware that the county does those. Or what those consist of. I guess, does anyone know or no? No?
No.
Okay, so the county has kept track of what gates are open, what boards are in. Um. And kept a written record of that. I, I plan on adding on more to that because if you say, hey, there is. Four boards in this bay and six boards. Say, to me, what does that mean? How much water is going through that bay? You could, what size are those boards? What's going on there? So what I wanted, what I plan on doing is if boards are changed. They'll say, hey, there's this many boards, but the boards, the top of the boards at this elevation. And because there are benchmarks at. Um. Higgins and Holton Lake. That way if people are wondering how much water is going over, how much water is not going over, they can. They can do that math or they can see what's going on there. The only structure that doesn't have benchmarks at it. Would be St. Helen and it's my kind of recommendation maybe to. Put those there, have someone. Drop some benchmarks there. It only costs between $500 to $1,000. But that would be something, also this data would be good for when you do redesign so that the engineering firm knows. The flow given throughout the year. This will tell how much flow is going through the structure. Uh. Any questions, any of that? Okay. At the SAD meeting, I told people that I would read off. Questions that were asked that I thought were important. These are questions I think you guys would also like to know and. Should know. I'm not doing any questions on factors. Mainly because. Um. At the, on the 28th, those factors could change, so I don't want to answer any questions on factors if there, there's a potential for change. So there's only six questions. It's pretty, pretty quick. Um. One of the big questions that came in is how is this being financed? Um, this is being financed with bond. The SAD team will work with bond council and the county's financial advisor to help determine the number of years. For the main construction project. We anticipate for the first. Holton Lake assessment. Um, to be spread over to the, to the 40 years. When does the county plan to issue this assessment to homeowners? The first assessment. Hopefully beyond the December 2024 tax bill. Why is this meeting or why are these meetings being held now when many of our residents are away for the winter months? The interim repairs are needed on the lake level control structure ideally before spring, which is why we're holding the meeting. And starting the special assessment process now. Why? Are, is the county considering a five-year temporary fix? A five-year. Fix is being considered because that's how long it could take to incorporate the long-term improvements. Why are Holton Lake flats not included in the SAD? They drain into the lake. Only properties that benefit from the lake level are included in the district. The district is only made up of properties that are on the lake or. That have an easement or other legal right to access the lake through a plat or condo association. If this is a public lake, why is the Holton Lake community funding the project, this project? The state of Michigan. Should be funding this project since this lake is not a private one. Why has this not been addressed? A special. A lake level special assessment only applies to the parcels that benefit from the body of water, not the people. This prevents the entire state or county from receiving an assessment. This is set by statute. That's all I have on Holton Lake.
Do you have any questions? Chase?
I didn't want to say Chase is, I went in and checked out the new plates that were put in. And I really like them. They're very secure. Not going to go nowhere's and you did a great job. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
State Police Steel Plate Investigation Update, Commissioner Wolfson?
Yes, I met with, um. The State Police Commander at Holton Lake, Scott McManus. And also Detective Sergeant Grant. Uzakowski. And discussed the investigation about the steel plate unit at Holton Lake. Um. They did investigate that. They got, the detective got back with me. And said basically because it is an eagle. Law that. Is been infringed upon and eagle has no desire to prosecute. This was going to go nowhere's. As they were concerned at this point.
Question? Are there any questions? Lake St. Helen delegated authority update, Chase.
All right, um, all I can say about St. Helen is. Hold on. All I can say about St. Helen is that as soon as the Holton Lake assessment is done, um, the goal is. Right into St. Helen. That's, that's about all that's going on at St. Helen. Otherwise, all is good to my knowledge.
Any questions?
Yes. Um. Is St. Helen methodology for assessment going to be different than Holton Lake or we're going to try and follow the same protocol?
We're going to try to follow the same.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, Chase.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Lake Level Control Structure Visit Discussion, Commissioner Melbourne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend to the board. The public that we go out at your leisure, preferably in May. To, uh, to do a site visit of all three lake level control structures. My recommendation would be to be about a half hour. At each lake level control structure would be a, it would be a meeting of the whole. So it would have to be posted because we would all be together. My recommendation would be to do it after meeting. Of our meeting, starting maybe like at noon. And we should be able to finish by 3 o'clock. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate your time.
Are there any questions or further discussion regarding this?
Um, I don't see where that's necessary. Every board member has had the opportunity, if you go look at these dams. If it goes down, I won't be there anyway.
I couldn't more forcefully disagree. I think it's important for us as a board to go out and for the public to have an opportunity to talk with us. Me with the legal control structures. I would, I would comment that I think it's imperative that we go.
Um, I have spoken to Commissioner Melbourne regarding this. I'm not. Fully opposed to doing this. Um, I guess my biggest questions that I want to get. Final answers are what, what would be the liability issues for the county? If we're all together doing this, is the county clerk's office have to be there? And if so, do they have someone available? Same with the sheriff's department?
The question would be, we have liability because we're there, but I think we owe it to the people to. I think if the people have that, they should have that opportunity to see us at the legal level control structures. On the clerk's office or the clerk.
All right.
Last couple of times we've done this, I haven't a hold of them anymore. Taking all the commission. Boss picked us up here and dropped us off along with the. Russ.
Okay. We'll take a further look at that. Um. Motions and resolutions. Currently, we don't have any, um. Next up would be public comment. There any public comment? If you could come up to the front. Turn the microphone on.
Probably Ben Chase.
Oh.
What was he talking about? The book.
You have to state your name and turn the microphone on.
My name is James Johnson. Chase was talking about benchmarks. At the dam. That lake level benchmarks that he's talking about?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Um. Benchmarks are typically. This is what everything's measured off of.
Okay.
Something has to determine what do we measure off from when we do a project or look at something.
Thank you. When you, okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
We have to go through all of this just for.
Yes.
Pardon? Bishop.
Okay.
Green's on. Your green on? Okay, cause I can't hear you very well back here. I guess that was one of my com, or my complaint, Craig Cotterman, uh, 413 Old Trail Drive. I guess we live on the lake. And I guess I couldn't hear that well and I do have hearing aids, so I apologize. But others in the audience couldn't hear that well either. Actually, the Zoom meeting. I guess. And what was I hearing that Eagle wasn't going to prosecute? Is that, or? They didn't care if the lake level was higher than what it was? Could you clarify that for me?
Yes, you're the one who met with them.
It has nothing to do with the lake level.
Okay.
Me, my state police investigation thing?
Pardon?
Me, my report on the state police investigation?
Yeah.
Had nothing to do with lake level.
Okay.
It was strictly about something being done without a permit.
Oh, putting, putting, uh. Putting the barriers in there without having a permit to do so.
Don't play.
Yeah, it was, it was in reference to the steel plate place.
Are you maintaining the lake Holton Lake at the legal level right now?
I think that was Eric Kostergens. Comment today that it was.
Okay, you are doing that.
Yeah.
Oh, it's pretty much what you've been doing for the last 30 years. Is that correct?
Well, we're trying to achieve the legal level. I don't know what's been done in the last 30 years.
So your intent is to increase the lake level of Holton Lake?
No, it is not.
But you have, you have restrictions in the dam.
The intent is.
Always, you always bank this water. I think your intent is fairly clear here. And what concerns me is you, uh. You have this special assessment district that you've labeled as a lake level issue. Not a dam repair issue or a dam maintenance or that we need a new dam. This money you're going to collect is for a lake level issue, so you can do that with whatever you want. This doesn't seem right to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name's Dave Missby. I also live on Old Trail Drive. Special Assessment District that was identified. Seems to me to be lost in something because the Cut River property is not being assessed. The same reason. That is affected the same as the level of the lake or Holton Lake and the dam structure on Holton Lake. But why is that area and all that property, 10 miles of Cut River, not in that same. District of assessments, special assessments. All about the waterfrontage, all about the people on the water. That's all part of the water. It's all navigational water. It's connected to Holton Lake. Any navigational water that's directly connected to Holton Lake should be. Receiving the same special assessment. Equally. Does anybody have any? Answer?
We don't usually respond during public comment, um, but what we will do is take. Your questions and we will get those answered at the next. Lake level meeting at the beginning of next month.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes.
My name is Dave Schindman. I live in Marquee Township. I was listening to Chase and I had went out and looked at the dam. And I haven't seen it since these new things were fixed. But I was talking to Chase at that meeting that we had about lake level on the dams assessment stuff. He said that it sounded like there was a underwash under one of those concrete things. So I'm wondering, they repaired it? Did they repair that thing or was it the gates? That's what I sort of want to ask Chase, but it wasn't during the comment meeting part of it. So if they got new gates in there, is that the issue? Or was it, is it the concrete pylons that are, that are damaged in the dam? I guess I would like more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Not currently, no.
Oh, yeah.
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, the meeting will be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.